Now with that, we're asking them to consider starting with a staff of six, which would also include chief of police, administrative assistant, four officers, and then any additional officers will be up to their discretion. There's also an option to go with no committed police force to the town of Mount Airy. That means that we would be covered by the counties. Frederick County and Carroll County would cover us. By the way, this is something that both sheriffs feel they could do. Do they feel they could do it as well as having our own police force or having a dedicated police force? They do not. But they believe they can provide adequate police coverage at zero cost. Or, we could contract with Carroll and Frederick County sheriffs independently. For the Carroll County side, naturally Carroll County sheriffs; Frederick County side, Frederick County sheriffs. A fifth option is not listed here because it's an option that they would make available to us, and that would be to contract with either the Carroll County sheriffs to cover both sides, both Carroll and Frederick, or the Frederick County sheriffs to cover both sides, Carroll and Frederick. Unfortunately, that is one of the things we struggle with here, being a by-county town, and neither police force is interested in that particular option. So, four options are available for consideration. We actually performed a breakdown of the cost. If you flip to the next page, click, click. Who's on the clicker? It's not listed here tonight. It is on the website, but we compared what we have now, trooper versus town force, and I believe this was at five troopers to five officers. We also did a three-year cross, and this is an up-to-date, this is in addition to the report that was performed back in, what's that, 2011? This is the latest. We did a three-year comparison of what it would cost to have five troopers as compared to, hold on, let me get this straight. Yeah, what would cost us over a three-year period? And it appears, Charlene, correct me if I'm wrong, that we would actually, would cost us approximately $100,000 in capital costs for our own vehicles and to set up. The first year, it would cost us $100,000 more, but in every year after that, we would start to see a significant savings.
That's just with five officers.
That's just with five. That's keeping it apples to apples. I think if you look at the ratio of officers per resident, we have 10,000 residents in Mount Airy. The recommended ratio is one officer per thousand. We should actually have, we should actually have 10 officers if we were going by proper ratios. We're actually under, underrated, for lack of a better term. So, strictly apples to apples, a three-year cost comparison, we're going to start seeing a payback in the second year if we went with our own police force. So with that said, please click. The committee, which by the way consisted of myself, Councilman Ken Phibus, who is not here today, he unfortunately couldn't make it, Councilman Bob King, Monica Wirebox, town administrator, Debbie Parker, town clerk, Charlene Singleton, our senior accounting clerk, Lisa Brent, who's our assistant, and John Stu Meyer, our police liaison, they were committee members. And our recommendation has been, as you can read here, is to start our own police force. With that being said, the report's been out there. This is now your meeting. We'd like to hear from you, just to let you know how this will work. We want to make sure we allow time to hear from everybody. So if we go into any detailed questions, we may hold those questions and address them later under a policy discussion. The policy discussion portion will be for town council members to ask any questions or to address any questions we didn't have time to get to. I don't see a need to limit speakers unless we look like we're going to have a problem.
I would get a, given the number of people here, I would find out how many people plan to speak.
That's a good point. How many people plan to speak? How many people plan to speak tonight?
One, two, three, four, five, six. I see about six, seven. So even if we go 10 minutes each, you're looking at an hour or so, so.
I would go at five.
Why don't we, if, let's limit it to five, and if somebody gets cut off when we have extra time, we'll circle back and get you. And if you have questions that we can't answer, we'll get your name and a contact information and we'll try to address your question at a later time, maybe a question we're not aware of, that I can't answer tonight. So with that being said, we'll open up the microphone. If you just care to line up, we do ask that you state your name and address, because this is being recorded.
How you doing? All right. Larry Hushaw, 501 West Ridge Drive. I just have a question. What about the facility? Where police department, the cost of building a police department, is that something that would be fit into the Flatiron Plan? Would it be a separate piece of property, a separate building, something that has been built? If you could just address that.
Yes, certainly, and I will try to address brief questions. I won't take up too much time with detail, but that's an easy, quick question. Under our current comparison, it's five to five, and it's going to be under this current situation that we have now. So they would be housed in the Flatiron Building or into an expanded Flatiron Building. If we decide to increase our police force, that could possibly increase our cost, but it would increase the cost as well for the state police. So to keep it apples to apples, there's no change in where we're going to house the police department.
And that's adequate holding facility, all the other stuff?
We do not need a holding facility for our police force.
All right, cool.
Michael O'Brien, 806 Park Avenue. We've heard about all the attributes of getting our own police force. What are the disadvantages of losing the state trooper program?
Honestly, it's, it's going to be a monumental task on the staff and on the mayor to undertake such a project. At the end of the day, I think it's worth it. Downsides, it's a bit of an unknown, and it's going to be a lot of work, but I can't really identify what a downside would be, besides, it's new. It's new to all of us, and it's going to be a sort of learning process. But fortunately, this is something I need to share with the audience and with the public, both Sheriff Tregone and Sheriff Jenkins are willing, are willing to step up and to help us with our conversion and to help us establish our own police force. They feel very strongly that we should go that route, and they are willing to step up and see this through. So I hope that addresses your question, Doc. Thank you. Would I say Tregone? I'm a little dating myself there, Deweze. Thank you.
Earl Anderson, 803 Marygoround. I'm very much in favor of having the local police. I came from a small town in New Jersey two and a half years ago. We had maybe 1,500 residents, but we had a large business section. We had like 10 or 12 police officers, and they stayed for 20, 25 years. I knew most of them. I had a very good rapport with them. One time when my dog ran away, the cop instead of taking the dog to the dog pond, brought him back, and he's laughing, "Oh, I have your dog." And one, the day came when I had to call 911, the first to arrive was the local police. So I view that as a rapid response. I knew most of them, and it was a very good relationship, and I think that's what the town of Mount Airy needs. I haven't seen the cost numbers. There's no numbers released.
Actually, there are. They're on the website.
I haven't seen them.
Okay, well, you'll have to get to the website. But we can get your hard copy if you'd like to see that. I believe you're a CPA too, correct?
I'm retired CPA.
So I know the number's going to mean a lot. And I just, I just want to clarify, we're talking, I don't want to leave the impression that we're not getting community policing from the state police. There's some officers here that I've become close to. I feel confident I can call them, they respond, they care very much. It's just a matter of longevity and continuity that I feel we can do better with our own police force. It doesn't take away from the value of our state police program or the great service that Mount Airy has received for decades. So let's clarify that. Anyone else care to make a comment, ask a question?
Hi, I'm Beth May, 1110 Poplar Grove Court in Twin Ridge. Just have a quick question. Have you budgeted and planned for an overlap for the transition phase when we stop using the state troopers and we start using our own task force? Will there be an overlap, and if so, how long?
Actually, as far as how the conversion would take place, we'll look at our conversion team to see how that would take place. I've heard recommendations, and this would have to be discussed between the state police. First of all, town council has to make a decision, so we cannot budget anything until they make a decision. So is there something budgeted? No. What has been budgeted is for our own police chief. We did put that number in the budget. That will get us started to go down the path that you've described, but we would have to discuss that. There would, there's indications to me that there would not be a phasing process. I personally would be more in favor of phasing. I'm into incremental. I like things nice and easy, let's make it work. But I've also heard that there's some benefits just cutting it and changing. I don't know how that's going to happen yet. I can't answer that for you, and I can't even research and answer it for you. We'll have to determine that as we go. But it can go either way.
Roger Dollman, Wildwood Community. Thanks for the opportunity to see the reports and to offer comments. Earl mentioned that there wasn't any cost information for what the proposed department would, would cost.
Earl has not seen it. There is cost information. It is on the website, and we can actually make hard copies available.
I haven't looked at the website, and it's not, it's not available here. What is the approximate cost, operating cost beyond the capital cost?
Charlene, you have to figure it out.
You know, on an annual basis. I think there was some discussion.
I'm not going to trot at his figures, and that's not this type of hearing, but if she can rattle off quick, we'll do that.
I'm not positive. I have the most.
No, 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 just approximation.
All right. So let's say you're one, five troopers, including their administrative costs that's provided by the state of Maryland, versus a town force of five officers with an administrative assistant. The first year would involve capital costs for the town force.
Mike, can I do this real quick? Like, the current cost of the state trooper program is about $850,000. So the first year for our program would be about $950,000. After that, we would see, it would drop back down to about $800,000, say to about $50,000. Those are very rough numbers.
I'm sure there was a rigorous analysis of what the cost items would be, but I would venture to guess that it would be an underestimate, because in most of these things, not everything is taken into consideration, and there are things that are, that might be inadvertently overlooked, or just not thought of, or these things, by golly, they just show up. So I would estimate that the cost would be quite a bit, not quite a bit, but it would be more than what you have there, without having to look, having looked at the details. That's just the way things will go. But whatever the cost, that's probably not the most important factor from my perspective. And that is, the fourth item on your list of rationale, where you have, "We desire a good community policing system." That needs to be the focus, and not only desire, the town government should insist on it, so that we have a police department that considers all aspects that they're likely to encounter. You know, not just some burglaries, or home invasions, or, you know, whatever things that the police run up against, but the community problems that are quite different from what you read in the newspaper. You know, the police have to deal with a bunch of refusers or gangs, that sort of thing, but also deal with people who have behavioral problems. In the Wildwood community where I live, there are probably 200-some residents, and they're elderly, and they may have, may be on certain medications that get out of whack, and behaviors change, and we would like to see a police department that could deal with those unusual behaviors and not have to use brute force approaches. And I don't know whether it's appropriate or not to point out that in a neighboring city, there was an incident in a theater with a young fellow that had a disability and was confronted with brute force and was evidently killed. That's not the kind of situation that I think we would want to see in our community. So, someone who, the police would need training in community, community management, or not community management, but community problems, as well as dealing with the usual arrests that they have to make. Thank you.
And if I could just emphasize, because you pointed out bullet number four, good, we have a good policing system, but the word that we inserted there is "community policing system," and some of the issues that you spoke of, in my terms and what I've discussed with other people, is the continuity of our police officers. If you get an officer like a Sergeant Grady that's been here five, 10, 15 years, he'll know the trouble spots, he'll know the trouble areas, he'll know this person's weakness or this person's strengths, and that's what we mean by the term "community." So I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that we do not have good policing. We do. But what I'm looking for is more continuity, more in the community line of sight as far as policing. So just to clarify and to build on what you had said, and thank you for your comments. Sir, I don't remember, did you give your name?
Roger Dollman.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rick Blatchford from Nottingham. I was going to say something about community policing, but I think you've pretty much covered it. The biggest thing with community policing, and by the way, I was part of the original task force back in 2011, 10-11. The biggest thing with community policing is, and I have not talked to the state troopers, I know Corporal Johnson briefly. We haven't gotten to know each other, we don't talk a lot. Fortunately, I haven't met him on the street or had occasion to. Community policing, I don't know that we're getting what the real idea is from the state police, and the reason is not that they're incompetent, because they're not incompetent, they're very competent. But as the mayor mentioned earlier, they cycle through too frequently. A year and a half is not long enough, and I don't think, I'll make an assumption that I don't think any of you gentlemen could think that you would know a 10,000-person community in the year and a half. There are too many things to know. If you have good community policing, a Sergeant Grady would hear of a problem, and he could probably name you three people that would be, it would be one of them. That's community policing. Know where the trouble spots are, know who the troublemakers are, and know how to deal with those troublemakers. You get that through continuity and long-term. With regard to the last gentleman's question about costs, my figures are now dated, four years. We talked to, to get the numbers that we arrived at, we talked to the chief of police of Hempstead, Sykesville, Manchester, Brunswick, Tonnytown, and Bowie. And you might ask why we talked to Bowie. We talked to Bowie because they were the most recent police department to be formed that was available, and we wanted to get current costs, current problems. And he was very helpful, and all the chiefs were very helpful. We didn't think of something, they'd say, "Hey, did you think about this?" Not going to say we thought of everything, and what we came at is not what the most recent group came up with. One of the things they came up with that I hadn't thought of is, when you're buying equipment, the sheriffs, this did not come from the police task force that I was part of, but the sheriffs have suggested to buy equipment by piggybacking with them. If they're buying cars, "Hey, Mount Airy, do you need a couple cars? Yeah, we want two. We'll put you in with our purchase and we'll get a discount on that." So that's the kind of things that have been looked at, and I think it's been looked at very thoroughly. With regard to costs, and again, these figures are four years old, we're paying $800,000 plus now, right?
I think it's.
For about five troopers. Five years ago, four and a half, Manchester with a force of six and one staff, seven people, was paying $496,000, almost half of what we're paying for five troopers. Brunswick, they had 10 officers and two staff. They were paying $880,000, about what we're paying now. I think it's fair to say that we could come close to doubling our force right now for the same money. They're not going to do that originally, and it's not my call, it's your guys'. But that's pretty much it. I think everything's been looked at, and I think it's a good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to build on some of the comments that Rick had made as far as costs, and the other gentleman had said that, you know, we probably underestimated. Either way is a guess, if you think we underestimated, overestimate it. But I can tell you, we did go back, taking the original police task force report, we had a series of meetings with our subgroup, with the sheriffs, with law enforcement professionals, and I can tell you, we had maybe six meetings where we did talk about things, "Gosh, we need insurance for this, we need this, we don't need this," and we did as thorough of a job as we could. Even with the current state police program, there are some unknowns to the cause. So there is definitely an unknown factor. You would definitely put in a contingency amount when you formed a police force, but I feel confident that the numbers that we put forward is going to be close to the numbers it's going to come in at. Thank you.
I would also like to clarify one thing. Rick, you said this is our, this is on us. This is your guys' decision, okay? You need to let us know, you need to let us know on the town council and the mayor and the town staff, how you feel about this. You may be uncomfortable getting up and talking tonight, and I can appreciate that, but please let us know what your opinions are. This is, this is a very, very critical decision that we're going to have to make, and we need you with us.
Okay, thank you, councilman. The podium's open. Oh, Pete, I got your book, by the way.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks, Pat. Pete Ballas, 401 Longbow Road. I'd like to offer another opinion. We've heard some good things tonight about our town having its own police force, but I'd like to look at this side of it. We, as a community here, we have people in the room who live outside the community. If I live on Candace Drive, if I live on Botler Road, what do I do if I need to have a police officer come to my house? Who do I call? I call over to Carroll County, maybe I call the state troopers, maybe I call the police force of Carroll County, the sheriff's department. If I live on the Frederick County side, outside of Mount Airy, I call the sheriff's department in Frederick County. We're talking about expending a great deal of money here, and money shouldn't really be the issue. It really shouldn't. It should be public safety. But perhaps we, as a town, us that live in the incorporated town of Mount Airy, have not known any difference. We've had a police department. We've had the benefit of the Maryland State Police. Perhaps instead of saying, "We're going to do a police department," whom? What we should do is, is utilize a resource that's already here with trained people. Use the Frederick County Sheriff's Department, the Carroll County Sheriff's Department to police our town, and if we have to spend more money for special events, like the brats and the beers, we would contract with the sheriff's departments and add the troopers. Now, in talking to different people in our town, some people are for the police department, some people are not. So, we don't really need to put this on the council for you gentlemen to make the vote, and it's a very tough decision, what to do. So, perhaps the thing would be is to put it on a ballot, let the residents vote for it, and see what we have to do and what we have to spend. And that's my comment on that, Mayor, and thanks for turning in the blue book.
Pete, are you talking three or, he's talking three?
Three or four.
What's that, sir?
On the option list.
You described option.
So I'd be using option number three.
Okay. Thanks, Pete.
And Pete, ballot, and this is definitely a town council decision. It's my side as the executive side of the House to provide the information for their decision. And just from my own personal perspective, if this was a tough decision, I would totally support putting it on the ballot. You still may want to do that. For me, you're elected to be leaders and to make decisions, and if the decision's easy to make, I hope you make it yourself. Anybody else like to speak?
Do you have a follow-up moment?
Sure, so a gentleman behind you wants to speak, but it looks like we're going to have plenty of time, so sure.
It's Earl Anderson again.
If anybody wants to speak, please line up on the wall.
You mentioned money. Money is just one factor to consider. What I emphasized before, coming out of New Jersey, I had a very warm, personal connection with the local police. I knew them all. And that's the most important thing of all. Knowing the local police, one thing that really bothered me was the turnover of the state police every 18 months, new guys, new guys. And I don't know any of the state police officers. Thank God, no one has stopped me. I haven't been stopped by a cop in 25 years, but I will now, yeah.
I think your luck's about to change.
You know, I mean.
Earl speaks for some lives. I have no life left.
To give another example, I had my own business, and one time I was in my office after midnight, and the doorbell rang, and I said, "Good God, who's bothering me now?" And I was reluctant to open the door. I turned on the light, it was the local police. And I opened the door, I said, "What's wrong?" He said, "Well, we noticed your light is on. Are you all right?" I said, "Of course I'm all right." He said, "But we know that you don't normally work past midnight, and we thought something was wrong." So that's the kind of experience I've had with a local police force that stayed there 10, 15, 20 years. I knew them all, and I got along great with them. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Zach Peters, 107 Sunset Avenue. I know you said you were going to do like a policy discussion later on, so if you want to reserve.
Let's see what you've got.
Just a couple concerns. One, from talking to a few folks in the town, has a cost of training or a program like that been built into some of the figures that have been thrown around, or the quality of training?
Yeah, if I could try to answer your questions as we go. There is a state mandated training that officers are required to have, and as part of our job description, that would be in the job description for them to come to us with that training, so yes, to answer your question, it has been factored.
Okay, I know that was a big concern, especially with the state police, I mean, you know.
And by the way, the state police, and anybody feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, there is a state mandated training level, and all officers go through the same exact training. Now, there's specialized training above that, and they may hit it at a different level. But the state requires a training, so a sheriff would have the same training as the state police as far as that goes, and if I'm wrong, correct me.
Good to know. A second area of concern was lack of resources with a town police force. Currently, you know, with, with the state police, we have access to the state police resources statewide, be it crime lab, be it whatever. My understanding is that as, having your own police force, you still have access to those, you're just not, you could be third on the list. Is that correct?
I would not doubt that you're correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we will still have access to the state. By the way, guys, we all.
Just not prioritize.
And I'm not saying you're wrong, I don't know if you're right, but you could be right. I'm not really sure how the hierarchy is going to work, but I've heard the same thing you have heard, so I will just validate. Your concern is being valid, but we are still state residents, we still pay state taxes. State police are not going away. We still have state police resources. Will we get them as quickly without a force? I don't know. I don't think politically anybody's going to step up and say no, but the reality, maybe, I don't know.
But when you have that conversation of quality of local policing, I think that's certainly a factor that you need to think about.
And it could be. And Zach, I think if we were in a situation where we were on a person-to-person crime, murders, things like that, that would even be a more important topic. Fortunately, in Mount Airy, we're not against those kind of crimes, although unfortunately we've had our share of, but they've been family murders. But that would be a huge concern.
Right, well, that absolutely into my, my next point is, I'm not sure that we have the crime statistics that would support taking on the cost of having a local police force. I haven't made an official, you know, opinion on it. I haven't read enough into it, but that's just something that we've also been discussing. So I just wanted to.
Would you, so are you more of a fan without researching maybe of option three that Pete Ballas had discussed?
I haven't, I haven't thought about it, to be honest.
Because at this point now, we do expend the cost for our own police force, and that police force, we have our own police force right now, folks. It's the Maryland State Police.
Correct.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good point, Zach, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Molesworth, 201 Flower Court. Does it help if I know you police officers, if you stop me?
Well, you've got, you've got the.
That might change what I had to say.
You've got the top man from, Lieutenant McCrory is here tonight, so we're very thankful to have him.
I just have some general comments. You want to hear what we think. I agree with the gentleman that's, that talked about the cost studies, although Rick mentioned this, and it's what you don't know when you do the cost studies that come back to get you. So, they're probably underestimated, but maybe you've done a really good job.
Well, we could have overestimated. Well, we could have overestimated.
Yeah, you could have.
You don't know how to do budgets.
I believe that competency is more important than. And competency, I don't think you can beat these guys. You can't. On a scale of one to 10, I think they're 10. I think the sheriff's deputies are probably an eight, and I think a community police force will be something below that. And that leads to the liability if something goes wrong. Look at Baltimore City. They've got their own police academy. All those officers go through that police academy before they get out on the street. And, I mean, just look at the news we see every day from a police officer who does something he's not supposed to do. And if I'm not wrong, if I'm not mistaken, Baltimore City pays tens of millions of liability claims every year. Suppose we have a community police officer that's a town employee, I assume, who pays that liability? Now, I'm sure we have insurance, but we're talking big numbers here that get thrown around when they do something they shouldn't do. And you don't hear much of that from state troopers doing things they shouldn't do. It's mostly sheriff's deputies and local police officers. So that would be a concern for me. This is the biggest decision, I think, the councils had to make since we went to water and sewer many years ago. I'm not sure anything else is that big of a decision. And if we get our own police force, that's not a reversible decision. You're going to have a big investment that you're going to lose if it doesn't work out. So I think you should go slow. Pete's idea, I don't know, three or four? If we can't stay with these guys because of cost, and you have to do something, then I would recommend a police force that's already in place, being either Frederick County and Carroll County, or either three or four. I don't have an opinion on one of them, but let them step up and help us as we need it. If two, three years down the road that doesn't work out, then revisit this again. I don't see where it's critical that you have to make this decision right now, so.
That's, that's awesome.
Enough said.
Three. If I could just address a couple of issues, and I by no means am an authority, but we have ran this through our insurance. We made sure we factored in those costs. And I'm not sure about state police when you hear in the local news how much involvement they have. It's my understanding perhaps they're patrolling more of a broader area on the highways, maybe they're not involved deep into the communities. I just don't know. And maybe that's why they're not coming in contact with these lawsuits and cases as much as perhaps town police forces and county police. That may be why they're not. I just don't know. I always think of state police as certainly being on a very high level, but maybe more so out on a higher level on the highways and whatnot.
I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, just to add, there's one factoid you have in that the Maryland State Police right now will support two municipalities.
And that's, and that's.
And that's probably why you don't see.
And that's, and that's, and I meant to say that in my notes, there's so many thoughts going on. And as far as community policing, there's only two municipalities in the state of Maryland that have the state police as community police forces. I don't know, I think they have more programs, but they've since went away. The county just got away from them as well. So I don't know how much involvement they have to expose themselves to those particular lawsuits. But your point may be very valid. I don't know, it's good for discussion. And we're into round twos.
Beth May again.
And that's good, for plenty of time.
I am in favor of the local police force, our own police force. I don't have the data, and I'm all about data. Data's a great way to take the emotion out of decisions. So I'd love to see the data that says how big the town is, and what the crime is, and what the police service is, and what the police calls, what the handle are, et cetera. Anecdotally, in my 19 years here in Mount Airy, I think this town has grown tremendously. And I think the incidence of vandalism, if not also major crimes, has increased dramatically. And it is my sincere hope that with our own police force, with the 24/7 that we're talking about, that we don't currently get, that the mere presence of officers in our community who know our community and know our citizens will help curb the vandalism. The kids who might otherwise be good kids, but they see an opportunity, and they know no one's watching, because we don't have 24/7, because the state police can't do it. It's not that they've been asked to do it and they're falling down on the job. They can't do it. They're not contracted to do it. So I would like to see us have our own 24/7, the five officers we've talked about. The recove is 10. Based on the number of residents, we're talking about five. Let's see how that goes. It's going to be more coverage than we currently have, and hopefully as competent as the coverage as we currently have. That remains to be seen. But if we have issues with the competency, there are ways to deal with issues. We do risk mitigations, we do issue resolutions. So all's not lost if we find out it's not working. We fix it. So I'm all for it.
Thank you. As far as figures, ma'am, you quoted a lot. All that information's readily available, but if you could shoot me or any staff members' email, we can get you all those figures. There's a couple of people here tonight that are not utilizing our website, and I realize that's not convenient for everybody, so if you would please stay after the meeting. Charlene, would you be kind enough to burn some copies of all the stats, the comparisons? But for those of you that do go on the web, the information is on the website and has been for the last 30 days.
My name's Dan Richmond, live on Church Street. Sort of at the end of the conversation with this meeting, in that I'm not very computer savvy, but I'm just curious, and I haven't been able to get a straight answer, why are we paying $800,000 to the state troopers in the town? In a building that the town owns?
Your question, sir, because you're going to get a straight answer. What's your question? Why are we paying $800,000?
Why are we paying $800,000 for a building we own?
Okay, that's not for the building. We're paying $800,000 for the state police services. We actually supplied the building at no cost. We own that building. The $800,000 you speak of is the cost of the program.
I thought that's what I paid in my taxes for the state of Maryland, for state police.
If you pay 800, you pay $800,000? Not to be funny, I'm trying to understand.
No, but I pay taxes at the end of the year. Isn't my taxes cover state police in Westminster and Frederick and Garrett County?
And it's, you're asking a good question, sir. Actually, the people in the town of Mount Airy, we don't get double taxed, we do pay extra tax in the form of we pay for a service that we already pay taxes for, but we get something back from Carroll and Frederick County called tax equity. So the town actually receives a rebate for the funds that we pay, and that rebate offsets the taxes that you pay to the town of Mount Airy. So it's, I don't know if it's a complicated formula, we'd be glad to take you offline and explain it more, but since you do pay, let me just say for ease of conversation, you do pay double, we get that back. Part of that, you're paying to town of Mount Airy, you're not paying as much to the town of Mount Airy, because we're getting some of that back from the county. The county recognizes duplication of services. So there's a program called tax equity.
It's illegal in the state of Maryland to double tax, and we get somewhere in neighborhood of $450,000, $500,000 back from Frederick County involving parks, police, planning commission, and roads, our places. There's four items that they give us money back, because we take care of that ourselves here.
So then we're so far only out $400,000, so we're getting $400 back?
I think you're mixing your.
For Bob's numbers, the Frederick side too. There's also the Carroll side. So we get, we get money on the other side too.
It's not a dollar-for-dollar, it's a formula, and people long for administrations before me.
There's always a formula for something.
Yeah.
And who can figure it out except the guy that maybe come up with it? And I'm not sure about him.
Well, with Bob and Frederick County, the formula is now part of the law, and that just happened this year, so we're making progress.
So why can't we have more state police?
We can, sir, it's an added cost. Right now, we're struggling with the $850,000.
That's what, that's what the state charges us just to have the five troopers.
And we could have more state police. It would cost us approximately 150,000 officers, somewhere in that range. These are very rough numbers, folks. Exact numbers are available.
$100,000 per officer?
Approximately, Charlene, is approximately 150.
They sure are paying about $177,000 on us.
Per officer. That's everything, sir. That's insurance, vehicles, gas, training, everything.
And all this, the maintenance one, these police forces, that's considered in with your figures?
We believe everything is factored into our figures. Hopefully, we haven't missed anything.
You got the formula, right?
Pardon me?
You got the formula.
Well, this is not a formula, this is actually facts and figures. The counties have formulas.
Couple of points that came to mind, Rick Blackford, I'm still in Nottingham. Couple of points that came to mind. The officers, one of the things we considered, and I don't know whether the new group has, is that given today's policing environment, we sort of thought that there's a good possibility that training wouldn't be a huge item up front, because we could get experienced officers. Who wants to work in Baltimore today if you could work here? We could get somebody who's retired and wants to do some, not ready to quit, but he's put in his 20, he's only 40 years old. He wants to come here to a nice, quiet suburban town. That's one of the things we considered. Don't know it's going to happen, but that's just a thought. As far as cost again goes, when we did ours, we figured, starting with five and increasing to 10, we would break even in five years. Yeah, there's going to be a big front-end load, but in five, five and a half years, we'd be breaking even, and after that, we'd be saving money. And this is anticipating the costs of the town police and the annual escalation of the state police, because it is going up every year. We don't know how much, but we took a guess at that. Didn't even use a formula. With regard to why rush? Came up five years ago. We've waited five years. Going to wait another five years? No, I would rather not do that. I did say when we finished the first group, is it'll never be cheaper than it is right now. That still applies. With regard to vandalism, I don't know, it seems to be an increasing problem in Nottingham. There was an email that was sent around the Nottingham group today about something that was going on, and a lady went down and approached three young ladies, teenage girls, and when she said she was going to call the police, all she got was a smile, until she pulled out her cell phone and started dialing, and then they took off. And John, remember that little trip we took last, what was it, last year, two years ago? Down behind the tennis courts? I had reason to be down there today looking for a lost dog. Not mine, a neighbor lost a dog. It's still alive and well. Beer can is, pile of beer cans is huge, and the chairs are still there. This is down in a creek bottom in a wooded area where the kids gather, and the evidence is there. Anyway, that's all I have to say, so good luck.
Good point. And Rick, actually, our new studies, the payback happens after the first year now. I think yours was five years, ours is one.
I didn't use that formula.
No formula, that's their figures.
Thank you.
While we're on a public safety discussion, there's a little lull while people think about who wants to come to the podium. We had the opportunity to meet with some police auxiliary members that once served the town of Seidsville. We're very excited to hear what they can bring to the town of Mount Airy in the form of assisting our current police and adding to our current police coverage in the form of zoning enforcement, public outreach, public safety, home security assessments, showing up at our schools. It would be office, uniformed officers that have, they won't carry weapons, but they have certain training. So that's something we're looking to enhance, whatever police force we go with, two of the members of auxiliary here tonight. We hope to have a presentation in council later. With that being said, I digressed, and anybody else? Any public comments before we go into a policy discussion? And that'll be a time where the audience can still stay. I think we've addressed the questions today, but the council may have some questions. Generally, they don't take questions during a public hearing, so it'll be their opportunity to ask questions and to go into general policy issues.
And before there are any more questions, you have Clemson, Cleveland, quick soon now.
Oh, Clemson, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Do you, Bill?
Policy discussion, turn back.
All right.
Then I get to drink a water.
Bill Botts, 103 East Church Street. I'm wondering, how many communities in Maryland do we know of that have done a similar transition from troopers to their own police force?
I defer to the regional task force. How many?
Ruby is the only one I can name.
That switch exactly from state police?
I don't know who was covering them, was county or state, one of the other?
John, you worked with one. John?
The Carroll thing was county police, and they worked with their own department, Carroll Police.
But his question was, did he contract all officers?
All right, so.
They had a similar contract, did he contract, did he do with the state troopers?
So your question, I'm not hearing an answer. We'll have to research that.
Well, and the only reason I ask it, I'm thinking we're not necessarily reinventing the wheel. If there's opportunity for us to speak with communities that have done a similar transition, I think.
Well, there's only two that currently have it. I don't know.
Well, and maybe there's some in the region, you know, just outside of Maryland.
After we go out into the state of Maryland, I'd probably stop researching. There's two in Maryland currently. It's a good question, Bill. Let me see if anybody in the state of Maryland.
And so I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, if they had it to do all over, you know, what assessment they would give us? And also, you know, where do they think they're stronger by having gone to a local police force? Where do they, where do they think maybe they're missing out a little bit?
That's a great point.
What would they do differently?
That's great. I would have thought we would have asked that or researched that, but.
I spoke to almost every chief in the two county area, and they all loved their forces and their communities and, you know.
But specifically, did anybody leave the state police?
I think as long as I've been here, which is like 12, 13 years, it's only been the two.
Walkerville and Mount Airy.
Walkerville and Mount Airy were the only two resident trooper.
County, county.
Right, the only two, only resident trooper, right, but that's on a county scale.
Yes.
But that had resident troopers, so it's been a long.
There may not be one.
I think it's been a long time since, I'm sure there were towns that did that transition, but I think it's been a long time, like 20 years.
Yeah, anything down 20 years is probably not relevant. But, yeah, it's a good question.
Debbie's saying the same thing. She's been here 20 years, and it's only been the two towns that have been on the program all this, all this time.
Okay, is there any more? Sure, sir, go ahead. As soon as we're done with public comment, we're going to turn the meeting back over to the council president for a policy discussion.
Mr. Monix, 3 Warfield Drive. Has anybody approached the state? As, you know, they have, they've offered the program, but to negotiate with them, or?
Oh, yes.
Won't that be asked?
Yes, yes.
I'm sure, it seems why we got, why the state police has such a turnover, you know, 18 months, you know? I can remember back when, when we used to have three, three local state troopers here that lived in the community itself.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's no longer. And I just wondered if the council and Mr. Mayor yourself could again approach the state and say, "Look, maybe we can tweak this program a little bit better, you know, our favor and your favor, and maybe..." I'm sure the state troopers, Mount Airy's not their only concern. They probably get calls, you know, they got to be routed somewhere else, and if that's the case, then we're not getting the full benefit from a trooper, you know, that we're paying for.
To answer, to answer your question, because we all jumped on the bandwagon and say yes, and the answer's not totally yes. As far as money, we reach out to them every year, and I specifically wrote them before we started this last task force study and said, "We're going into this. We need to know what you can do." Did we specifically ask and drill down on continuity of officers to stay longer? Not formally. I have said that I'm concerned that we're getting turnovers. I've expressed that. But no, I have not formally reached out to Lieutenant McCrory and asked, "Hey, can we keep the same people here?"
Yeah.
I've not done that. That is, that is, that's very true.
It must be something that the town can approach the state.
And I don't know if we can. I'm not going to put the lieutenant on the spot.
Keep the state, state men here that we have.
But that's only one factor, but to be totally transparent, totally honest, no, we did not ask that specifically other than just in casual conversations. We let them know that's a concern. But we could have drilled on that one issue a little bit deeper. I agree. Councilman Bobby raises, can I make sure the gentleman is finished first? Are you finished, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
And I wanted to say that Peter and I, at the last MML meeting, they have a secretary's day. Okay? And you can, you have the opportunity to meet with secretaries of a lot of the departments in the state of Maryland. And Peter and I met with the, he was representing somebody else, but he was the former commander.
He was like a corporal or the major. He was the big geez.
And, you know, we spent half an hour talking to him about the situation with the Maryland State Police. And, you know, I mean, I'm passionate. I want these guys to stay here. And so, you know, I was, and he said, "Things are not going to change." As far as the cost is concerned.
They're fixed cost. There's not, I think the state police has done everything they can.
You know, he did explain to us that they're not trying to do anything unfairly.
No, they're not.
They're not trying to, you know, make sure that the Maryland State Police survives on the backs of small towns. But the costs for them are so high that, you know, it's passing it down. If you are the Maryland State Police.
I think they all, they all agree.
Finest police in the state of Maryland.
The state police have worked, they've been very honest. They've given us rebates when I didn't know I had rebates coming.
Right.
They've done everything they possibly can, but they are also limited as to what they could do. We all have limits. We all have budgets, and we all have accountability. And they're stuck by a certain set of rules, and we have to act accordingly.
But as far as discussing with him, you know, I had an opportunity to sit down for a half an hour.
Good, I'm glad. That's another benefit of the MML. It's a good point. Is there any other public comment before we turn the meeting back over to the town council?
Just to the gentleman's point, I would.
That's just like Columbo. You know that, right?
I would only add that under a new administration now, about a year in, that emphasizes local government and local control, it may be worth it to reach out, to discuss continuity of officers in the program, or maybe tweak the program at all. It could be worth it.
It's a good, it's a good point, Zach. Certainly, council can take that into consideration. You want to reach out and see if there's anything. And we do have an administration, a new administration in Maryland. Thank you. Any other public comment? I'm going to go once, twice. Okay, we're going to close public comment. You can still stay. I'm turning it back over to council president Peter Helfer for policy discussion among the council.
All right.
And thanks to all of you for coming.
It's just so dark in here.
We can't make this decision without listening to what you have to say. So thank you.
And some of you, you know, may want to hear what we're discussing here, or you may even have comments to deal with it, so let's.
I encourage you to stay. Helen, I would definitely encourage you to stay.
Well, let's, um, I will start out with, I guess, I have, I have not, to be honest with you, made up my mind yet on this position. One of my concerns is a concern that somebody actually kind of raised here tonight, but I kind of call it the, for lack of a better term, I call it the Freddie Gray situation. Right now, if that happens with the state troopers, you know what? It's not our problem. And when all those kind of things happen now, it's not our problem. So basically, we have somewhat of, we're buffered. We just throw money at the state, and they take all those problems off our hands. That's one reason why we probably end up paying a little more. We don't have to deal with those issues. Another issue that I had to deal with was, once we take it in here, our staff is then.
Peter, I'm having trouble hearing a lot of background.
Our staff is then going to be on the front line. Calls will come to town hall, and as it is now, just dump them off on the state troopers, so I'm concerned about that. They indicated, there was a statement that no holding facility. I thought that was kind of odd, that we would have no holding facility here once we have our own force, but careful looking at that. Another issue that I've seen come up repeatedly with our troopers, and that is their ability to go multi-jurisdictional. I have not heard that in any of the comments tonight, but I can remember talking to Dan Pickett when he was here. He was a sergeant. And he had found out that some guy was involved in some activities in town that were inappropriate. And he found out that this guy worked in Frederick. So he was going to go over to this guy who worked in Frederick and basically say, "Cut it out. Don't come back to town." A state trooper has no problem driving to Frederick or to Damascus or to Westminster to talk to somebody. Somebody who is a town trooper can't go outside the town limit without having to hook up with somebody. So it becomes much more complicated. So I didn't hear that in any of the discussion tonight, which is a concern. Another issue.
I heard some head shaking from a police officer. Is that, is that true or not true? We don't know. It's part of the discussion, so. And can you identify?
That's everything we've, we've been heard, said that.
Do you get to go to the podium? Because this is some policy discussion, and some of these questions.
And you're Frederick City, right? Was, yeah, okay. I know, and it's Hetherington?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought I knew you. So we do have an experienced police officer here.
Yeah, just everybody knows, I just, I retired in June from Frederick City Police. I was the deputy chief of police there. When you're a sworn police officer in the state of Maryland, you have statewide jurisdiction in all criminal matters. So you can go wherever you want in the state to investigate crime. Enforcing traffic laws, that's a little different situation. But most jurisdictions, local jurisdictions, we had one, ritual aid agreements with Frederick County, Washington County. We would send our drug task force up to Hagerstown to do drug buys. New faces, they didn't know them. They would do likewise. They would send them down to us. It's just a question of having agreements in place to be able to do what it is you want to do. But you can go anywhere in the state of Maryland to enforce criminal laws.
Okay, good, thanks. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, I don't know, Peter.
Well, maybe you can also answer my next question.
I'll try.
And you were Frederick City, correct?
Yes.
It was a town, but that's what I thought. It was a municipal system. We had the issue of resources raised here tonight. I mean, obviously, I know when the state trooper calls in, he gets the state police. Frederick has fairly large resources on their own. Mount Airy is not going to. You know, when you have five, 10 officers, it's pretty small. How would our policeman's access to larger resources be?
Well, it's one of those things that was brought up by some other people during the comments. You're not likely, when you start this up, if you go forward with it, going to be hiring brand-new police officers. You're going to be hiring veteran officers.
I'm assuming that. I'm assuming we're going to get veterans who know the ropes.
And if you hire the right ones, they bring a lot of that skill set and resource from a knowledge perspective comes with them. For instance, I'm an accident reconstructionist. I've been doing it for 20-some years. That's one of the things that the state police specialize in. So you could reach out to them, but you would also potentially have people here that have those same skills. The physical resources, it depends on what do you want to get. You know, crime labs and stuff like that. I mean, I know both sheriffs very well. I've talked to them about this situation. They both pledged all the resources that they have to help out. So I don't think you're going to come up short in resources or knowledge.
But I think it's just an agreement thing with the other agencies. I mean, if you're just like anybody else, Frederick City probably reached out to the state police if they needed something. You need a helicopter, whatever.
Yes.
And boom, you know, it's not instantaneous. But then again, one thing I wanted to point out out of this whole discussion, I hate to derail Peter.
No, that's fine. That was, that was the last of mine missed, so.
But it is, it is somewhat instantaneous in that you have agreements with these other agencies. Like our SWAT team, we had an agreement with Montgomery County. If we had a large barricade, not large in size, but in duration, you know, you can only have your operators out there for so long before they have to be relieved. So when we would get one that looked like in, this is a retired lieutenant from Frederick City. We were both hostage negotiators as well. So if we had one that was going to go more than two or three hours, or we thought it might go more than that, we would immediately pick up the phone and call Montgomery County, and they'd have guys on their way.
Right.
You know, when you enter in these agreements, they come. You call, they come. That's, that's what you're agreeing to.
But I guess, and I appreciate that detail because what I wanted to try and make clear to the public, as well as everybody on the council and the mayor, is that with these resources and agreements, we're not losing anything. It's just a different way to get things done. So sure, the state troopers have helicopters, they have crime labs, they have whatever. Just because they make a phone call to try and get a helicopter, I've seen helicopters don't show up for 30, 40 minutes because they're busy. They're refueling. They're dealing with a different accident, whatever. We may have that same 30, 40-minute wait because the choppers and rail somewhere.
Regardless.
Regardless.
Yeah, I mean, MSP has the same limitations. I mean, they have helicopter, but that doesn't mean they all have them available waiting for Mount Airy to call them. You know, if they have to activate their crash team to do a multiple fatal accident, they're coming from Pikesville. They're not coming from Westminster.
So I just want to make that clear to everybody that, you know, when we talk about these resources or lack thereof, there's a lot of local resources that we can end up reaching out to, just like the police are going to do. I'm sure the police, the state police currently right now, if they don't have resources available, they don't twiddle their thumbs and say, "Oh, we're not going to do anything because somebody's not close." They're going to reach out to a sheriff or the county or whatever. Because I've seen three or four different types of police cars pulled over on the road, pulling one person over. I don't know how that happened. Somebody did something really bad.
It's the nature of city, county, and state all in a straight line behind one car.
You said you wouldn't bring that up tonight.
Honestly, it's the nature of what we do. If I was driving back and forth to work and I had to take home car because of my position and all that kind of stuff, if I saw a deputy with a traffic stop, I'd stop just to make sure it was okay. I mean, that's what we do. It's just, that's just the way the game works. It's just how we operate. And somebody mentioned something about the Freddie Gray syndrome. That's not a great example to use, but I understand the point.
Well, just sheer dollars.
I understand. My point was, you know, you could have the same, if one of your watering sewer guys, God forbid, ran over a kid crossing the street, you're on the hook for the same amount of liability.
And down to that point, I was going to put it to this too, Peter. We can't, as a town, individuals, et cetera, we can't constrain ourselves to, oh, my gosh, somebody can sue me for something. At some point, you have to kind of take the responsibility and go, you know what? We need to do this for the people. We need to ensure safeties in place and policies and everything else. But that's how we become, you know, a good town, or the state police became what they did. They didn't start off, you know, with everything they have right this second and worrying about it because we'll never go anywhere if we're constantly in fear of somebody's going to sue me or, you know, what are people going to think?
More scientific than that, pardon me for interruption.
Go right ahead.
They have actuaries that studied that. We reached out to our insurance company. They factored that in. Their actuary studies of the likelihood of something like that happening in our town, when they quoted us a rate back, that particular rate has been factored in.
Well, here's, here's where I.
It's not even a guess. There's a scientific actuary study.
Here's where I got to the question. I talked to Frank Johnson, who used to be mayor here. He's now one of the city attorneys. He's one of the city attorneys now down in Gaithersburg. And the one thing he said to me is he said, "You need to be prepared for the amount of litigation that's going to evolve around your police force." That is not going to be insurance dollars. That's going to be us paying Tom. That's going to be town dollars. The insurance company's not going to pay Tom for the litigation.
I've also talked to Frank Johnson. He didn't have those particular concerns.
That was the only thing he said to me.
His flags, but yeah, sure.
Two attorneys talking.
But again, it's an actuary.
We were actually sitting in court on a case.
He was trying to impress you.
But so, back to that point, though, you know, sure, it's going to cost money for litigation if it happens. But to say, "Oh, Freddie Gray, that's the reason why for Mount Airy, we don't want to end up doing something." First, I'll point to all the other municipalities that have started their own police forces, et cetera. They have the same issues that they have to face. They didn't go, "Well, we're going to get sued. Let's not do it. Let's let the state police." There is a reason why everybody has started to move towards their own police force in a way, and it hasn't been just cost. Okay? There is a price differential. Sure, Peter, you said, "Throw a ton of money at the state, and I don't have to worry about it." You don't have to worry about it, but you may not be getting every single dollar that you're paying out back in something. You're just throwing money out so you don't have to worry about a problem. So, I mean, there is two ways to think about it.
From my perspective, one of the things that I was in charge of was internal affairs. And as a department, we rarely got sued. Most of our legal fees, if you will, was having our city attorney do research into, okay, we want to write an ordinance about loitering in the park after dark or whatever the case may be. You know, what can we do? What can we do? You know, start doing the, paying those types of legal fees far exceeded exponentially by.
We do that as a council right now.
Right. By the number of times we got sued, I could count on one hand in 20 years.
Yeah, I don't think the state police has ever had, now that I'm aware of, a lawsuit here. If I could, a couple of the issues, and councilman, I'll defer back.
No, you go ahead. I was just going to knock down on the list. If you want to, are you talking about the Freddie Gray one?
I'm raising one at the point, not Freddie Gray, but we had talked about putting the burden on staff and on the mayor and on the executive side. And that, that did concern me. But just so the council knows, as part of your discussion, we are hiring a police chief. We're hiring an administrative assistant to serve the police chief. We do not want to put this burden on staff. We cannot put this burden on staff. This is going to be handled by the police chief and the administrative assistant. It's not going to be back here. It'll be a little bit more probably on Monica and myself, maybe a little on Debbie, but we're going to have an administrative assistant. That's going to budget it.
But to dovetail onto what the mayor said, and that was the second point Peter brought up, calls to town hall. We have people call all the time about a problem, and what do we do? We defer them to the state police, right? Same thing's going to happen. People are going to call town hall and say, "I have an issue, blah, blah, blah for the police." Great, here's the police chief, here's the administrative assistant, it's off-town staff. They're going to get phone calls. We get tons of phone calls here for things that the town is not in control of. But we defer them to the people or give them the information necessary so that it can continue on.
We've actually went down, did a site visit, and all the council was invited to a 9/11 call center in Carroll County where we discussed, should we go with our police force? How would calls be routed? It's going to be seamless. It's going to be the way it is now, but it's going to be seamless as far as the call is going to be routed just fine. So as far as calls coming in, there's going to be no shortage. But these are good points for us to vet and get out there.
The other thing, Peter, you had brought up that was interesting was the new holding facility. So if I'm not mistaken, we don't have a holding facility right here now either.
But I assume that, but we know that the state troopers do have a holding facility somewhere else.
Sure, and so do the sheriffs, so do the county police.
Yeah, I believe we would transfer to them.
We would transfer off.
I would assume, and again.
Yeah, I don't know. I never thought about it until tonight.
Yeah, I mean, things, when I first started many moons ago, we have, we had a cell block in our headquarters building.
We had one in the basement of this building.
Sure. But now with the development of central booking facilities, that's gone by the wayside. I can't even remember the last time we would have somebody in a cell.
But it's a good question.
And is the closest one right now based on limited?
Some of these things are going to hit them. I'd rather get them down.
Frederick's probably, depending on where in town you are, it's probably equally.
Yeah, 20 minutes either way.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a good, 20 minutes either way.
So one, audience question.
Just a quick question. Tom, from 1110 Paltrow Grove Court. I love the idea of having the agreements between the neighboring departments. Is there a cost associated with those agreements? That we did have something here?
Because it's usually a mutual aid. If we're going to do something, somebody had mentioned earlier about, I don't remember which gentleman it was, what if something happens just outside the town limits?
That's the same thing you said.
We had the same agreement with Frederick County. If something happened just outside the city limits, and we were the closest one, we'd go there, secure the scene, do what we had to do until they could get somebody there. I would assume likewise, you would want to do the same thing with Frederick and Carroll County.
Yeah, I think what, and that was probably Pete that was referring to, even though we have very defined lines here, you know, it's just like Frederick. People that live outside are really our family also.
I grew up just outside of town, and I always called myself a Mount Airy person.
It's hard not to consider them in every decision we make, although we can't because they don't pay the tax.
Right.
But the mayor, and I just had this epiphany with him, is that he already came up with a multi-boundary type reactionary thing when it was the emergency response. So, I mean, we have agreements with different municipalities and agencies.
In our EOP plan, we have kind of, we're kind of operations.
And we do the same thing with police.
Yeah.
It's done, I have templates galore for anything you could potentially think of to do that. It's, it's, it's not a complicated matter at all.
I saw you raise your hand, Doc.
Gotta love the small town where Doc raises his hand.
There's seven guys in town named Doc.
I, I, I agree with your Freddie Gray, um, liability potential. And what, what I'm not necessarily scared of is the initial Freddie Gray, but subsequent ones, number one. And number two, does our insurance get jacked to the point where we can't afford it, or it gets over and above what we currently are paying on a per capita basis for state-
You mean after an event? Cause right now, it's not.
No, I, no, I understand. They're equivocable now, but once, i- if you have an event, remember, the state, the counties, they have pretty deep pockets to, with insurers, but also people might be looking at our town reserves to attach to.
Well, we, my understanding is that they calculated the insurance cost into their dollar calculation, and we are insured through the local government insurance trust, which is-
Statewide, statewide.
They're not gonna throw us out.
They won't throw us. They're statewide.
It's not like they could say, you don't have a policy.
And they insure every other private police department in the state of Maryland. Well, that's a part of it, which is a lot.
I mean, LGIT, I mean, that's the, probably the only game in town for this kind of thing.
Yeah, we're, we're in the same place that every other town is in.
Skate park. When, when, when we didn't wanna build a skate park because of all the potential suits, and-
Built one anyways.
Legit said, you know, it's not gonna cost you hardly anything. Build it. And we did. And it hasn't been a huge expense.
It's not like car insurance. You hit somebody and it gets up.
So, one, a couple other questions.
We actually received an award for having lowest claims, just, just saying.
I'm not, I'm not criticizing. I'm what-ifing.
Right, so it's a good point to bring up Mount Airy. Do you have to look at the town we live in?
So, has anyone discussed what the definition of a failure would be? And how, how you might deal with it?
You know, that's a good point, and in any kind of project planning-
You always look for a downside. I'm not being critical.
Uh, that would, that would be something that I'd, I'd have to agree with you.
And what our potential liability would be for that. And could we get the state police back?
Uh, the answer to the state police back is no.
Uh, yeah.
Once they're gone, they're gone.
We would go to, we would go to Plan Three or Plan Four.
We'd have to be two, three, or four.
Yeah. And, and I do agree with you, Doc, and we should've probably had, what if this goes wrong? But then again, you can what if yourself back to the stone age.
No, but I mean, you, you need to look at reasonable, honest answers to those questions before you make a decision.
I, I guess insurance is kind of our fallback on what if. We have insurance.
Right.
But your point is well taken.
There are, there are other, there are other things other than insurance that cause failures, or, or, you know. But, and I don't know what they are, but I'm sure they're out there.
Yeah, but right now, if a police car, uh, breaks down, the state police, they actually do replace it. So that's, that's a good thing. There are, there are some benefits to a contract. There's, there's, there's little idiosyncrasies that are, I don't know if they're big enough to discuss, but yeah, there's some of that.
So my final question is, it revolves around, it's putting a lot of weight on you guys, and I mean that sincerely, to make decisions on this magnitude.
That's why we're elected, though.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I understand that's why you were elected. Um, but I would, you know, I would put out there that, you know, you had that Zeltman annexation reversed by referendum, and that was a less mo- On a scale, I think that was a smaller deal than what you're talking about right now.
Uh, I differ with you on that. I was, I led the Zeltman annexation.
I understand that.
And that was a much, that was a much bigger deal than this. I can tell you that.
That's-
That disenfranchised, uh, the entire population of town, that was huge. It was a three to one ratio that that was overturned, so.
So, on a decision of this magnitude, I, I would encourage you to put that on a referendum. I, I just, I think that's too much weight for one group of five people to make. I just-
I, I, I will disagree with you, and I think that's why we were hired, and everybody sitting at this table knew that this might be the possibility. But I don't think we stopped the discussion here. I don't think the discussion ends tonight. You know, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I, I really don't think we've had enough.
Thanks, Doc.
Thanks, Doc.
Bob, I'm, I'm gonna turn the floor to you, and then Jason, and then I guess we're pretty much done.
That's, that's basically all I have to say. I, I hope this discussion is not done for tonight. And, you know, in a week or so, we'll be asked to make a decision. I, I, I just think we ought to go maybe another month or so on this.
Uh, as, as far as me and staff, is there any other information we can provide to town council? I, I personally think we've taken this as far as we can, and you should-
From ten people for tonight?
It's fine, but whatever you decide, but if we can help, you're, you're gonna need to let me know. I'm not gonna guess at what you need.
Well, I'm assuming the decision's gonna be made largely through the budget process.
Bob, the only, the only-
Well, we're gonna need to know for the budget. Good point, Peter. We need to know for the budget process.
And I know that.
And we can always budget and then not use it. That's true.
I, I wanna hear from Jason, but the only comment I wanted to make, Bob, as you said, we only heard from ten people. But like Rick ended up stating, this was back in two thousand and eleven, this was brought up. We've had many years of this. You and I campaigned on it. We've talked to tons of people. So everybody's had opportunities and still has opportunities to come and talk about it and tell us what their thoughts and feelings are. But if only ten people are gonna get up and talk out of a populace of ten thousand?
Okay, well, I, I mean, I-
We were elected to do a job.
I understand what you're, I understand what you're saying, but I, I almost wanna force them to get up and talk, and I don't know.
They, they put us in the position to make the decision, and if they don't like us making the decisions, then they'll remove us from the position.
Well, that's true.
So.
There, there are intricacies that go along with this decision. It is huge. There's no question about it.
Oh, yeah.
It seems to me the fundamental issue is, are you satisfied with the level of service you're getting now? And you, and if you're not, then the other things will work themselves out, and you get what you want from a level of service.
Well, there, there are some, some things that we haven't discussed that are important with this, the five officers from the Maryland State Police, his five officers. If our guy gets shot and goes down, they replace him. Okay, so now we still have five officers.
I'm not sure about that.
Maybe.
Yeah, they do. Or if somebody's just sick. If somebody's sick, we just get another officer. Somebody's on vacation, we get another officer.
Uh, I, I tell you, that's the way, if I could.
That's the way the contract reads.
That's the way the contract reads. That's not how it happens. I can tell you, that's not how it happens.
We know that's not how it is.
And I'm not gonna discuss policy too in detail. It's public safety. I can tell you, we do not get man for man replacement. If we actually lost a man, that man would be replaced, so on, on a larger scale, we'd get that. But every time an officer's sick or out, we go without coverage on those days.
Well, that's not supposed to be.
It's not supposed to be. It happens.
That, by the way, folks, that's been another problem. We have a contract that says a certain thing, and we've not necessarily been getting that certain thing.
Says lots of certain things.
Which is, which is one of the reasons why we're having this discussion as well. Bob, you done?
I'm done.
Jason?
I was really just, uh, here to, here to listen. Uh, I know when we were doing our election forum, we, we talked about this topic and, uh, we're strongly towards, uh, you know, a local police force with myself. Do you gentlemen reside in, reside in the town limits or no?
No. I grew up here, but I, I don't currently.
Okay. Based on some of the information you've heard tonight and your background and everything else, do you have, do you have an option of, of maybe just talk to me instead of the council, but do you have an option of what you think? Do you think we would be okay with our own force, or do you think we should share?
Again, I have a little bit of a angle here, because I would want the job, but, um, this is the second time you're gonna say that.
Yeah, I, I, we, I mean-
I know, you, you get it, you get it, I know.
I didn't need you to say that based on all of the experience you've come out.
But I, I've been involved in municipal policing for almost twenty-five years. And it's a different, a much different style of policing than what the state police provide. It's not a knock against them. It's just who they are. And the things that I think a lot of the people in this room have asked for and would like to see, that's not in their wheelhouse. It's just not. And I think if that is the direction that the town wants to go, then you absolutely should do your own. The way that you want it to go with the, the premise of what you want, what you expect is yours. It's not the governor's. It's not the superintendent of Maryland State Police. It's not the barracks commander. It's the town. And the only way you're gonna get that is to step out and do your own thing.
Did you have anything?
I do. Um, I don't know if I look familiar, and I don't know if any of you know, know my brother, but Marty Burns from the town.
You did look like Marty Burns. I was wondering where I knew you.
Yeah, without this. This is the, I just retired six months ago.
He was the president of Thurmond for many years.
He's one of the best looking men I've ever met in my life. We're, we're identical, we're identical twins, by the way.
Does Thurmond have a force?
Yes.
Now, they're a lot smaller than us.
This is what I'm bringing to your attention, though. I've talked to my brother about this very thing, and he can't believe you guys haven't just run with having your own police department. Because you guys control what we do. The officers are at your beck and call. If you want them to go write code enforcement, if you want them to enforce parking, if you want them to mingle with the town and the businesses and make a presence known, you guys decide what they do. I agree with what he said, that there, there's no knock here whatsoever on the Maryland State Police. There's none. But municipal policing is different than state policing. We have much more interest in our areas of concern in Frederick City, um, that you folks live in. If there's a problem in one area, that's where we gravitate toward, and that's the problem solving that we bring to the table. You, you have so much more control if you have your own. If it costs you one point five million dollars a year, I'm telling you, you guys will get so much more than you're getting right now. You just will. Uh, I, I, I'm excited for you because I think it's such a wonderful opportunity.
Tell Marty we said hi.
I actually have a letter sitting on my dresser from Marty and Bill Tragoni and, um, Kennard, um-
Current mayor, Kennard.
Yeah, he's the current mayor.
Right.
Okay. That basically says the same thing, and I have had not one person from another municipality tell me that it was a mistake.
That's true.
Every person that we've talked to said, do this.
At MML, I've talked-
They will be so happy.
At MML, I've talked to several towns, and I didn't have, none of them had any complaints. And we are probably the largest municipality in the state that does not have its own force. When you look at these other municipalities, I mean, some of these municipalities are tiny compared to us, and yet they've got, you know, forces of more off, I mean, Brunswick's got ten, and we've got five. And, you know, Brunswick is much smaller than we are.
They are. They're much, if I could address Jason's question, he had asked, he wanted to reach out to another police officer and ask what they thought. And you all did not have the benefit in our sub-meetings that we had with Sheriff Dewey's and Sheriff Jenkins. They totally, wholeheartedly support us going with our own police force, to the point where they have offered their services for free to help us set it up.
And it's, they're, they're getting a little something out of this, too. Talk about the mutual aid agreements. And I can tell you from a manpower staffing perspective and all that, the last thing Sheriff Jenkins wants to do is run a bunch of deputies down here to the town line to handle something. So, and you say, do you pay for, you know, the return you get in entering into these agreements? Is, hey, if you get a simple noise complaint a hundred yards over the town line, we'll go tell them to turn their music down. You don't have to run a deputy all the way down here from eighty-five and, or Thurmond or Emmitsburg. Cause, you know, there's some days, they got five, six deputies working whole county. Down to the southernmost tip of Frederick County. Same thing with Carroll County. This is on the fringe as far as they gotta go. They don't wanna send a deputy from Manchester down here. And that's what you get when you enter into these agreements.
So would that be an agreement between, uh, the two, the one the town and the county to divvy up of when the circles-
Well, you don't divvy up. You're just offering to assist them.
Sort of like when the fire department's called for a fire and multiple firehouses will show up.
Exactly. Mount Airy's got their first due area, but they respond to Newmarket on seventy on traffic accidents. It's not their first due area, but, but they go. It's, it's a similar situation. You know, they would get a, I hate to say a simple complaint, cause it's sort of cliche, but, like I said, somebody's playing their music too loud at ten o'clock on a Tuesday night or whatever. Hey, we'll pick that up for you, so you're not sending somebody from Emmitsburg.
And since the kind of poison's dropped, why I don't do that anymore.
And I'd just like to raise one point. We're talking about all the benefits. There are a couple downsides, and I think Peter may have touched on this. If an officer is down, we would get a replacement. We have to think about that for the town. I'm not sure what we factored in on this, but so many figures. Number two, if a car were to go out, they would replace it. And it's something, now, I'm not sure if they'd replace it to the next cycle where we have to purchase another one. I'm not sure. But there is, there is a little bit of insurance built in to that cost that we're paying Maryland State Police in the form of that one. But not when somebody's sick, we don't get it, we lose it.
Right.
Uh, and there is the car thing, and I'm not sure if that runs a whole cycle or not. It may run till we're up for the next bunch.
Somebody's on vacation and somebody has to run a prisoner down to Fred, to the lockup. Okay, everybody else is working tonight. So you got, oh, half your, half your force in a five-man force. You've got half your force is not here.
I'm not sure about all the figures you just quoted, but there's some benefits to state police in the form of, and it's almost like insurance.
And we don't have a-
But I, I would venture to say-
But I don't think it's enough to-
If there's a resident trooper working tonight, for example, and he locks somebody up and has to go, and they're working Westminster.
We have no coverage.
The barracks not gonna send anybody down.
They're not sending, they're not sending anybody by.
If a call happens down here, they'll send somebody down, but nobody's coming to drive around.
I'm trying, it's, it's not a huge benefit, but I, I want to be transparent as possible.
Scott, Scott, and then Jason.
So, the only comment I was gonna make was with regards to vehicles or any other piece of equipment that goes down short of a body. Okay, we have to replace equipment all the time around town. We end up losing, you know, I don't know, one of the, uh, snow trucks, or we lose, uh, trash trucks or whatever for the trash service. You may do with what you have. I mean, we'll end up getting the vehicle repaired. We'll get a new vehicle. We have reserves for a reason to end up taking care of certain things for those rainy day scenarios that we don't spend. If we start our own police force, we're gonna end up putting some type of rainy day around for those types of things that will be factored into the budget. And I'm not saying we're gonna end up putting a new car in there every single year.
No.
But I do know that we've talked about it at our budget meetings, paying for state trooper police vehicles.
We buy their vehicles.
We do, we do.
So I wanna be clear to everybody here. It's not just the state police give us everything and we pay nothing. We're still paying for certain state police.
And I'm not talking about-
We pay for all of them.
I'm not talking about equipment. I'm talking about manpower. If something happens to two of your officers, you are down to three.
So we have-
And that's that, and there is-
So what happens like this?
You can't just buy another one.
No, but what happens when the state police end up losing their resource?
You can't piggyback with anybody to get another one, huh?
What happens with the state police?
We, we would hire. We'd have to hire. They go on disability.
Some of them, the nature of the injury.
So, so what happens when we lose a state police officer? Cause I'll throw that away.
If it's for a week, I'm talking for a week. I'm not talking about forever.
We've lost it before. We've ended up having three of them missing, and we were down to two, and they were pulled all over. So what happened?
They are by, by our contract, they are supposed to put another officer in here.
The contract isn't there, so what happens? What's gonna happen is we start depending on the county. We start depending on other avenues, and we would do the same thing.
And that's, that's why you go with the relationships.
We pay overtime for officers. And Thurmond and Brunswick do that now. Thurmond and Brunswick have times where they have an officer on leave and an officer gets sick. They call the sheriff's office and say, hey, I need a little more help tonight.
We lose one, we're done.
And that's, that's the agreements that they have in place.
Jason, and then Dick.
Not asking the minimum, what would be a recommended force for the, what's a number for twenty-four hour coverage to cycle through guys? Not the minimum, but the recommended, cause I know you could probably get away with guys working shifts and those types of things. But what would be the recommended number?
Ten. We, we don't do it based on the shifts. We do it based on percentage of people, and it's ten.
One per thousand.
One per thousand. I'm not sure if that gives us twenty-four coverage as better, but Jason, a good rough number's ten.
I, I, I did some independent, went and took some classes at MML, taught by some of the other chiefs, and ten seemed like it was about our number.
We're about, we should be at ten. We're five.
Yeah.
I mean, there's different, a million different ways. How many people do you want working what hours? And this is one of the things that, again, I think a, a town force would do for you, is that they're gonna look at, what time of day are you getting the most calls for service? What days of the week? So if you need to have, say, three working on Saturday, but you only have one on Sunday, then you tailor your schedule to meet those needs of what's actually happening in town. As opposed to, we're gonna have two people working twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, when on some days at three o'clock in the morning, they might be sitting around doing nothing. But on a Saturday night, like you said, you have one making arrests, now you got one left. It'd really be nice to have another one. You know, so you build your schedule and your manpower around what the needs of town are.
I was just, uh, talking about as far as time on, time off, all, you know, all those things.
We, we used to work a four-ten hour schedule. Some people do six, eight, some do twenty-four, or twelve, twelve on, twelve off. I mean, there's-
All different ways.
Tons of options.
And our chief would sort that out.
Yeah, that'd be a chief's decision.
But I was just thinking about numbers, cause right now we're only doing the five.
And it would be very specific to us. They, they would figure out based upon what we needed instead of what, you know, the policy.
That's the chief balancing their resources.
Hey, Dick.
I just wanna be perfectly clear about something. You're talking about cars that break down and all of that, and understand that. But is, isn't it true that we pay for the state police cars on a rotating basis?
Yes, we buy their cars.
And, and so you're really talking about the maintenance expenses, and you're really talking about an unusual incident where you lose a car?
Coming on usual incident.
Okay, but on a rotating, but we're still paying for that anyway.
We're still paying for that. It's applesauce.
Yeah, it's, it's if a car gets smashed up, and I can only think of one instance where we lost a car.
Or we have one that broke down not too long ago, so they gave us, actually gave us a newer car to replace it. I mean, they have done.
Uh, it's, it's not a big benefit, Dick, but I'm trying to, while we're putting that-
We have, we have police stickers for Pat's car. We're gonna stick them on the side with a little light on top. Now, it's an electric car, so we don't want anybody to know that, so they won't just try and outdrive him.
You remember, you remember Mayor Jerry Johnson's car?
Yes, yes. I remember the town car, yeah. The old Caprice, wasn't it?
He had an old police car.
He bought an old police car. All right. Anybody have any other comments, or Larry? This is police, not train, Larry.
I know. We could talk about, could talk about Leggett and how they insurance everything, but, uh, including the caboose. The timeline, that's, uh, that's what I'd like to ask you about, and I know I have a lot of room to talk about timelines with, with the ever-sh sliding caboose. That'll be here soon. Uh, but the, uh, but in terms of, uh, bringing a police force, and it sounds like you're gonna try to work on getting a chief budgeted for next year, which-
We have that budgeted now.
You have a budget now.
We actually have a chief for half the year, right? Budgeted now.
Because we didn't know what we were doing at the time, so we just put it in there so that we already knew the money was there if we needed to.
And we still don't, might I?
A timeline, if I could give you a real, first, a council needs to make a decision. At that point, I'd say a minimum of six months to get something rolling.
So potentially, we could be looking at a twenty seventeen transition?
Definitely.
Debbie has just reminded, but we're required under the contract to give the state troopers six months. So we would, we would hire a chief, and basically would hope at the end of six months, he's hired, ready to go.
Okay.
Now, six months to a year, minimum timeline.
What time he needs would really.
The, the only comment I'll make to that, and it's up to the police, but Maryland hires, hire it well, fire it well, is that the Maryland police can terminate the agreement at any time, regardless. So if we make a decision, they have the option to terminate on the spot. Not saying they would, but they could.
Well, it sounds like you're thinking about it, but, you know, my concern would be getting caught in a position where you have to pay another year for the state troopers while we're spooling up a local police force, which would have a tremendous cost. while we're spooling up a local police force, which would have a tremendous cost.
No, it's a good point. No, we would, we would factor in a transition.
Yeah, and the only other-
Whether it's a gradual or a clean cut.
Yeah, but that's gonna be the initial big hit, and we do know if we, if we go this route, initially, there's gonna be a big upfront cost.
It costs us $100,000 the first year. Second year, we save 50, and they're all in.
But even if they must be cancel the contract, doesn't mean they won't come when you call.
No.
Yeah, and I'm not sure they can cancel tomorrow. I'm not sure they can either. It's a public safety issue there. I don't know.
Well, they still, they'll still come. It just means they're not in the contract anymore.
We'll throw them out of the Flatiron Building then.
Well, that goes back to the gentleman's comments about being a taxpayer in the state of Maryland, but, so they would come. But the, the only other thing I thought about bringing up, which, again, it sounds like y'all are thinking your way through this, and I greatly appreciate it and, and respect the job that y'all do, but, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the Flatiron Building, and if the Flatiron Building goes into full, you know, renovation, then you may not have room in there for a police force, so I just hope you've thought about an alternative.
For apples to apples comparison, we wouldn't have room for the state police either, so that cost is gonna be there no matter what we do.
Okay. All right. Well, good enough.
Good points, good points.
I do wanna say, these things do take time, and while I know you guys have debated the issue, the agreements that have to be struck communications-wise, when it comes to radios, all those can be done, but they do take time. So, when you're saying six months, that's pushing it.
Yeah, six months to a year. Yeah, we don't know. We're gonna have to put together, if the council makes a decision, we have to put together a transition team.
Our discussion had kind of been, we'll hire a chief, and then we'll kind of let him tell us what kind of time he's gonna need. Cause we don't know. I mean, he, he may say, "Oh, I knew it's six months." He may say, "Any nine months." We, you know, we're gonna kind of let him outline that timeline. Him or her. I don't wanna be, you know, I don't know, but, you know.
Are we done with policy? Are we done with policy?
We, uh, we, I think we're ready to adjourn, adjourn, gentlemen.
Adjourn? Let's adjourn this meeting.
I'm enjoying this meeting.
Ready to adjourn? Anybody here have a problem with adjourning?
Nope.
Jason, ready to adjourn? All right, we adjourned. Hey, I wanna thank everybody for being here. This was very good discussion. I learned a lot. I had some questions answered.
You all have done a presentation from the police auxiliary. They can do the badge.
Oh, right now?
No.
Oh, okay.
For free. I wanna see where we're going with this. They can do the badge. What kind of stuff, what kind of, they have a bell, they look like officers.
Can I get a gun and a badge?
No. Do they get pepper spray?
Can we get debit cards? I know we can write tickets.
You're gonna get it, you're gonna get it.
We can write tickets.
They can write things for us to get.